First 2013 meeting of the Iredale County Board of Commissioners to order. At this time, we'll have our invocation. Let's bow, please. Heavenly Father, again, we thank you for the opportunity to approach you and realizing the price it was paid to afford us this opportunity, and we thank you for that. Tonight, we ask you to impart your wisdom to us and give us sound judgment. I pray that we do everything that would please you, that would honor you, and would best serve the folks of this county. I pray that all of our words and our actions would be motivated by a wholesome dread of displeasing you and a devotion to serve the folks of this county, and we ask it in your name. Amen. Join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of our Country.
(Inaudible) in the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith, do you have any adjustments to this agenda from the staff this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to add an item, and I'll put this as G under Administrative Matters, and this would be Budget Amendment Number Seven. It has to do with the refinancing that has already taken place. This budget amendment will basically just, basically ratify this. Also, under new business, I have asked Susan Blumenstein to give a year-end financial report, basically give us how the last year closed out, where we are, and what we ended up, you know, putting into fund balance, so just a financial report. And I will add that under the first item, under Administrative Matters, there was one piece of Memo Number One that was not included in your packet, but that has been put in front of you, and it's called "The Analysis of Impediments." And that's all I have to add.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Are there any adjustments to this agenda from any member of the board this evening? If not, the floor is open for a motion for the adoption of this agenda.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve this agenda from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'm not aware of any special recognitions and awards this evening, or am I aware of any appointments before the board? No public hearings have been scheduled. That brings us to Administrative Matters, and Mr. Smith, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item A is a request for approval of the documents relating to the 2012 Scattered Site Housing Project, and Matthew Todd is here from our Planning Department, and Alicia Broadway is here from Benchmark.
Good evening, Chairman Johnson and Commissioners. I first want to say that on behalf of Benchmark CMR, Inc., out of Kannapolis, we are truly honored to serve Iredale County with the 2012 Scattered Site Housing Grant, and I am here tonight to request your consideration of approving policies that are required on behalf of this project. They are listed as you received in your memo and in your packets, but there are basically six separate motions that we would like to ask for your approval on tonight.
Okay.
Do you have any further questions?
Are there any questions, Ms. Broadway? Okay, we'll begin down the list, and Ms. Broadway, if you'd remain close to the microphone in case anybody has any specific questions in regard to any of these, I'd appreciate it.
I'll stay right here.
Okay. The first one is approval of resolution for the acquired CDBG policies, procedures, and plans.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a couple of remarks. I attended a, and this was a partisan event, but the program was something that was, I think, information that would have been good information for anybody to get a meeting of the Republican Women's Club last Thursday. I went to the city council candidate for on first, so I just heard about half of the program, but it's one of the best I've heard recently. Mr. Guy Smith from Cleveland County was describing how the federal government, to lesser extent the state governments, used money, grants. They attach conditions to these grants and use that as a tool for imposing their will, their control, on local governments. I wish that all members of this board and all members of all of the local governments in this board and in this county had been able to attend. It was a very eye-opening and informative meeting. You know, we often complain about mandates that are imposed on this board by the federal and state governments, and rightfully so. Sometimes these mandates are imposed by direct coercion, but in many cases, local governments are enticed into bending to the will of Washington or Raleigh by the lure of quote "free" money. We're offered a grant, some sort of grant, that will benefit at least a few people of the community. We are told that if we do not accept the money, someone else will get it. The only catch is that this free money almost always comes with strings attached. The next several items on our agenda, which are contained in Memo Number One, plus the memo we were just giving a few minutes ago, are textbook examples. If we approve these items, and I'm just giving a brief summary of what's in them. County manager would be tasked with receiving housing discrimination complaints, attempting a resolution, informing the state authorities if we couldn't resolve it at the local level. The county would have to publicize in the local newspaper and on the county website notices that the county manager can be contacted with housing discrimination complaints. The manager would also be required to accept complaints involving any HUD-funded program and be the compliance officer for Section 504 grievances. The county would additionally be required to post fair housing posters in both English and Spanish in a visible location in this building and at other public buildings, as well as distribute county-specific and state-printed fair housing pamphlets to lending institutions and housing-related nonprofit organizations around the county. Again, enforcement of fair housing laws is and has been a responsibility of the federal and state governments, not of the county. If the board approves these agenda items, we will be imposing upon ourselves a mandate to enforce state and federal laws, and in publicizing the fact that complaints can be lodged with a local official will likely only increase the number of complaints. One document we are being asked to adopt would commit the county to pursuing affirmative action in employment matters. It reads in part, quote, "Responsibility for implementing equal opportunities and affirmative action measures is hereby assigned to the Board of Commissioners," Chairman, so you'd have yet another duty. The county would be required to hold at least three public hearings relating to the grant. Upon request, we would be mandated to provide a translator for any non-English-speaking person desiring to attend one of the hearings. Upon request, the county would have to translate vital documents into other languages and provide translation assistance to any limited English proficiency individual wishing to file a complaint. This is only a brief summary of what we're being asked, the things we're being asked to impose upon ourselves. Just the memo on this matter in our agenda package is nearly 50 pages long. I think it'd be safe to say that complying with all the requirements involves probably hundreds of hours of staff time, and in addition, just five or 10 minutes ago, we were giving another memo relating to this matter, which is 22 pages long, and I'm sure that members have not had a chance to read it. The red tape attached to the acceptance of the housing grant is even worse than I, and I suspect most other board members realize it would be when the proposal was first submitted. I'm very cognizant of the argument that if we do not accept a grant, someone else will receive the money, and that some people will benefit by acceptance of the grant. That is the reason that in the past, I voted to accept many grants that I would not have voted to fund had I been a state or federal legislator. But there comes a point, somewhere, there comes a point where the onerous mandates attached to acceptance of the sovereign's money outweigh the benefits. I believe we reached that point in the matter at hand. And if one disagrees with that, I would just ask, you know, how high a price would you be willing to pay for the granted issue? How much do we have, you know, how much would we put up with? And I'd respectfully ask the fellow board members who originally voted in favor of the grant to reconsider their position in light of the, you know, all the new information we have before that. I know there's been a lot of talk about it, but I think that needs to be said, and I think the public needs to realize what kind of mandates we would be imposing on ourselves just to accept this grant.
Any other comments, or the floor remains open for a motion? I move we move on to the next item on the agenda. All right, we have a motion that we move to the next item on the agenda. Any discussion on that motion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Okay. Motion fails, 3-2. Floor remains open for a motion. I would move for the approval of the resolution required for the CDBG policies, procedures, and plans. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed?
No.
Motion carries, 3-2. Next is the approval of a fair housing resolution. Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed?
No.
Motion carries, 3-2. Third one is approval of a resolution authorizing the county manager and the Planning Division manager to sign the DCA reports and documents. Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve from Commissioner Robertson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries, 3-2. Approval of a budget, of a project budget ordinance. The floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve from Commissioner Robertson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries, 3-2. Approval of an analysis of impediments.
I'll just ask one question of the staff. Now, this is the information contained in this memo that we were just given immediately prior to this meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Twenty-one pages, and I certainly am a reasonably fast reader, but I certainly have not had time to read 21 pages, and I doubt that any other members have either. I assume if the board votes for that, they'll be voting for something they've not read.
Okay. I would assume that our staff or, has that an opportunity to review this? And is there a recommendation that we approve it?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries, 3-2. Approval of a language access plan. Floor is open for a motion. I would move for approval of a language access plan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries, 3-2.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
The next three items, B, C, and D, are all calls for public hearing from ICATS, and Ben Stikelether will make those requests.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
The first call for public hearings for a grant, Section 5310, which provides for elderly and disabled individuals. This grant will provide funding for elderly individuals and disabled individuals to go to their dialysis appointments and for personal trips. The only change from the last time we did this grant, we did increase the amount from $100,000 to $200,000.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Stikelether? Not, floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next call for a public hearings for Section 5311, this is our administrative and capital grant. It provides $260,000 for our administration costs for the next fiscal year, and then $130,000 of capital cost for next year, basically to replace vans that have aged out of our fleet. The change in this from last year because of the number of vans that we're able to replace goes from approximately $607,000 to $390,000.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Stikelether? Hearing none, floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next public hearings for Section 5316, the amount is going to stay the same at $200,000 from the last time we made this application. This is to take individuals to and from work when their work hours either begin before 8:00 or after 5:00, or end after 5:00.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Stikelether? Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
The next item E is a request from the State Division of Archives and Records for approval of amendments to the county management records retention and disposition schedule. These are two minor amendments to what the board approved back in July, and they have to do with two things. One is, it clarifies the language for us cheat and unclaimed property reports, and the second applies to employee eligibility records. And just to refresh your memory, these basically just set up the times in which these records can be disposed of. Otherwise, if we don't do this, we have to go to the state each time.
Okay. Any further questions, Mr. Smith? Floor is open for a motion.
Move we approve.
Have a motion to approve from Commissioner Boone. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item F is a request for approval of the September 17, 2013 minutes.
Okay.
Move we approve the minutes as presented.
Okay. Motion to approve the minutes comes from Commissioner Boone. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And Memo G, or Item G, is a request from Finance for approval of Budget Amendment Number Seven, and Susan will make that presentation.
Thank you. I appreciate you allowing this to be added to the agenda tonight. We did close on the refinancing of the 2003 Certificates of Participation and a 2004 installment purchase agreement that had, we had borrowed for Rescue Squad. The net present value savings is 2.3 million over the next 10 years, and this is a budget amendment, so I can record it in our general fund.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Blumenstein? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve Budget Amendment Number Seven from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
That brings us to an announcement of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. The Partners Behavioral Healthcare Board of Directors, there's two announcements. Appointments to boards and commissions. Nursing Home Advisory Committee, we have two appointments. Floor is open for nominations.
Mr. Chair, I move we table that.
Okay, we have a motion to table this. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, one appointment.
Mr. Chair, I move we table that nomination.
Motion to table this nomination, or appointment, rather, comes from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Local Emergency Planning Committee, there are three appointments. Floor is open for nominations.
Nominate Ryan Laney, March Gray, and Jane Murray.
Okay. Put Ms. Murray right to work, aren't we? Okay, any other nominations? Not, I move we close the floor to nominations and appoint these three by a commission. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Is there any unfinished business to come to our attention this evening? Public comment period. New business? I believe you had an item, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask Susan if she would come up and go through the year-end.
I believe each of you have received a copy of the, or will receive a copy, of the Consolidated General Fund Report for June 30, 2013. I'll wait just a minute till those get passed around. The auditors have completed their work, they made no adjustments, and we'll present to you the audited financial statements the second meeting in November, but I did want to give you an update. You'll see from this report that we had a better year than we had anticipated. The adverum tax base, we budgeted on 20.46 billion, and it came in at 20.582 billion. So we had about a 1% increase there. Our tax collection rate was up from a budgeted 96.95 to a 97.06, so that was good. We collected almost 1.2 million more than budgeted in adverum taxes. I'm only gonna hit on the big numbers, so I'll skip down through there a little. Sales taxes, we were only $530,000 under budget. That was a big surprise. July, August, and September receipts for the months of April, May, and June sales were much higher than I had anticipated, and that's a good thing. As a matter of fact, I just was given notice today of the July sales, retail sales report, and it looks like what we're receiving this month is 11% greater than what we received in October last year. So retail sales are up. Our Building and Land Development Departments, Register of Deeds, the land transfer tax or the excise tax, Code Enforcement, Planning, and Health, Own Site Revenues, Own Site Waste Water Revenues, all of those are up about 18 and a half percent over the prior year. Specifically, Code Enforcements, 11% up over the prior year. 19% for planning, 40% for health and own site wastewater. Register of Deeds, 29%. So that's, we've got, had some good growth there. EMS, it's up $611,000 over budget. Now, part of that was $121,000 settlement from Blue Cross Blue Shield where they underpaid us, but we also received $139,000 more in Medicaid settlement that was due to the county. $350,000 of that increase was fees. Health Department, we're down a little bit there for maternal health and WIC and child health coordination and what was budgeted. But overall, when I look at Health Department revenues and Health Department expenditures, we did not spend the full amount that we budgeted in county funds to support those services. So that's a good thing. Social Services, revenues were down 1.1 million, but expenditures were down 3.4 million. Most of that is in foster care and adoption assistance payments. We budgeted high, because if you remember, fiscal year 12 was a blowout year. We were getting more and more children every month, and our DSS director was able to turn I want to say that when you look down at the expenditure side, or the expenditure section, it looks like we underspent our budget by $11.7 million. Part of that, which you don't, you don't see here, but we're carrying over almost $5.7 million in encumbrances to next year for things that are started, but we hadn't received the goods or hadn't, the services hadn't been completed, so that's rolling over. But we did underspend our budget by 6.1 million. $819,000 of that was in the general governmental departments, the tax assessment, IT, finance, personnel, economic development, general governmental, vehicle services, county commissioners' budget, those types of items are considered general governmental. In public safety, after the encumbrances that we're carrying over, we still underspent it by 1.3 million. And that's your sheriff, jail, crime lab, animal services, ECOM, emergency management, EMS, so there's a lot of departments there, too. Register of Deeds after encumbrances, underspent about $13,000. Central permitting, about $8,900. Building standards, about $28,000 underspent. So we've got some smaller numbers in those departments. Cooperative extension, we underspent that budget about $67,000. If you remember, we had open positions there most of the year, and we do pay 50% of those salaries. But in human services, we underspent the Health Department by $794,000, and as I said, DSS, excuse me, I'm sorry, before I said DSS was 3.4, but that was the total of health and DSS. DSS was 2.5 million, health, $794,000. We even underspent our educational budget a little bit for financing fees that we have, trustee fees and so forth each year. Cultural and recreational, that's the public library and our recreation, we underspent by about $200,000 over and above the encumbrances, and other financing uses about $28,849. So I'm very pleased to report that we'll be adding to me in $457,000 to the unassigned fund balance for next year. And unassigned, after governmental accounting standards changes, we used to call that undesignated, unreserved. So I think we're going into our fiscal year 14, we're healthy in our fund balance. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
I noticed under the revenue, Sheriff's Department revenues were down by over $500,000. Is there any particular reason for that?
Federal equity sharing. In prior years, we've gotten in more money than we did this year. Now, I will say that there were some smaller changes in other line items, but the federal equity sharing was the biggest.
Okay. I'll ask, I don't know if you're prepared to answer it, but it, it appears that a lot of the new construction-related budgets, the revenue streams for inspections and stuff like planning, came in there about 30%, just ballpark, higher than we had projected. Yet, even though at the end of the fiscal year, sales tax revenues were higher than we had projected, we ended up lower than we projected for the year. Did most of the increase that we saw from the, from the building inspections, those and register deeds, was that weighted towards the end of the year as well, or is there a disconnect between what looks to be a bump up in construction, but not necessarily a bump up in retail sales here in the county? That was long, did that make sense?
I understand what you're asking, and I can't answer that. I can't give you a definite answer, but sales taxes do run about three, three months behind, and building permits from the time, and Ron may be able to tell you better, because, but building permits run several weeks, if not months, behind the point in time where building materials and appliances and things like that are being purchased. So I would rather you wait and let me run some more information. So I would rather you wait and let me run some more information on the permits.
And the purpose of the question wasn't to see if you could jump through mathematical hoops, but rather to get some feel for, is this good news going to, is it likely to continue, or, you know?
I might be a little...
Is this a positive trend, or is this just kind of, is it still too soon to tell? Or kind of where are we?
Susan, correct me if I'm wrong, but we did see in the development departments, they were beginning to come up last year.
Yes.
And they were pretty much out of the chute. I can't give you the numbers, but pretty much out of the chute, they were high consistently across the year. If not, if anything, they might have tapered down percentage-wise a little bit towards the end of this last fiscal year. But they were high pretty consistently throughout the whole year.
Yes, I'm glad you reminded me of that, because I believe at one of the quarters that we presented, they were up about 30% over the same point in time from the year before.
And I know when Langtree hit, that gave us a good positive bump in our fees. It's the sales tax number is the biggie.
Mm-hmm.
That's the one where if retail sales are good, we're going to be good. If retail sales are bad, we're going to, we hurt. So that's kind of what I guess I'm really concerned about. And then I just have one, just one observation. You know, I understand that you explained why these budgets are, you know, why we're 11 million underspent, but you take out the encumbrances and it's still 6 million. But I mean, up and down the line, across the board, all the various departments are coming in, you know, slightly under budget. And I think that just goes to the leadership in the, kind of the environment in county government, which is, we're going to live within our means, and each department is going to carry their share of that load. So, you know, I commend and appreciate all the folks who had to make hard decisions and to make those numbers work out. So thank you very much. And please extend our gratitude to the folks that made that happen.
And that's the department heads and all the employees. Everybody worked together. Everybody's in a saving mode.
Compared to 2007, what do you remember the percentage of fund balance that we had before the economy kind of take? Do you remember where that sat at? And are we near that again? Or are we above, below it?
We're greater than we were then. I think we were about 15%. And at one point, we were 12. We had dipped down to 12, but I'll pull that back and let it...
When your budget's lower than the same amount of money, makes your fund balance higher.
Right.
So a little bit of account.
I will say that this is the healthiest fund balance that I can remember.
I want to echo what Mr. Robertson says about competent management of this budget by our staff. They are indeed to be commended. But as usual the case, I don't like to see folks get euphoric. I still have an overriding concern about this economy, and I'm going to be real honest with you. You sit here and you watch the talking heads on TV, and you read the magazines, and you read the newspapers, and everybody is scratching their head. What are we going to do? The fact still remains, you have the lowest labor partition, participation rate you've had since Jimmy Carter. In terms of employment, this economy is smaller than it was nearly 40 years ago. Now, we scratch our heads as if we don't know what to do, as if we have never been here before. But we have been here before. And there are people who know how to fix it. The only problem is, none of the people who know how to fix it are in any position where they can put policy in place where you can fix it. As far as fiscal policy, which has to do with taxes and with regulations, there is no leadership at the national level in putting fiscal policy in place that will ignite this economy and create sustained economic growth. Hence, total reliance on the level of aggregate economic activity in this country today is solely relying upon monetary policy. Monetary policy being primarily within the jurisdiction of the Federal Reserve, which is why I am not as critical of Ben Bernanke as a lot of folks. If it weren't for Ben Bernanke, this economy would be in the tank. Now, I am not a big advocate of an expansionary monetary policy. But in the absence of leadership in the legislative and executive branch, it is the only choice that he has. So that is what's keeping this economy afloat right now. And if that monetary policy changes, this economy is going to turn on a dime. You're going to be in trouble before you know it. Now, I'll quote, I'll quote Rothschild here. "Give me the power to print money, and I don't care who makes the law." And that's true. And right now, they have the power to buy these bonds, and sooner or later, they're going to have to quit buying these bonds. And when they do, if there is no fiscal policy in place to spur this economy, to create investment, then this economy could get in trouble in a real, I mean, at light speed. It could turn, it could turn like you've never seen it turn before. And we're here today because I felt like when the economy started to go south, we made cuts, we made cuts, we made cuts. And one reason the fund balance went down is because we had to burn some fund balance. And then we had a reevaluation. Where about $400 to $500 million worth of tax base evaporated right before our eyes. And we had to come up with a strategy to build that fund balance to get us through this thing. We are, we are there. But I'm still apprehensive about how well the economy is going to do over the next four or five years if all we rely on is the purchase of bonds. That's a dangerous place to be. My thinking at this point, and I congratulate Ms. Blumenstein for consistent stewardship over the years and her acute analysis of this budget. I do think we need to keep a substantially heavier, higher percentage of fund balance than we historically have.
Yes.
For the simple reason, if this economy turns, I mean, folks, I was here in '08 and '09, in '09 and '10, in '11 and '12. There came a point, we were burning a million dollars a month. And it was nobody in this room's fault. We were burning cash really fast, and we had to stop it, and we did. Having said that, I would not, until there is fiscal policy in place to keep this economy going on a sustained basis, I think we need to keep a fund balance at a minimum of 18%. That's bare bones minimum. I think, Mr. Manager, during our fall planning session, I think we ought to give some serious consideration to this $2.457 billion, how much we would be willing to set aside for the jail. Because anything that we can set aside for the jail now will reduce the level of debt service should we have to incur debt for the jail in the future. And if that money is set aside, it will remove the temptation to spend that money on something else. So I welcome the opportunity to talk to the manager and encourage all my fellow commissioners to talk to our county manager and the county finance director and get some input from them as to how much of this money they would feel comfortable in going ahead and setting aside in the capital reserve fund for the jail. Because we've got an election coming up next year, and 18 months from now, there may be other people sitting here. But it doesn't matter who is going to be sitting here. You're going to have to build a jail. That's just my thinking. But thank you for your good work.
Thanks.
And I have a sales tax report I'll give you after the meeting.
Okay.
Three years ago, we said we were going to rebuild the fund balance, knowing that we could be in this position. And unfortunately, we still are, so I think our strategy was sound.
I think so. As far as your policy, I'll pick myself up. Policy prescriptions, I would agree that we should keep a healthy fund balance, and I would agree with your analysis that we should keep any future debt to a minimum. I have one other thing I would like to bring up under new business, Mr. Chairman.
Mm-hmm.
Please aboard.
Yes, sir.
Concerning our planning session next month, I would, you know, we've discussed ideas about having incentives for county employees who find ways to save money and so forth. I'd like to have, block out a little bit of time somewhere on the agenda to discuss that. It's easy to put these things on the back burner, and I'll try to come up with some fairly specific proposals, and the board, you know, the board can discuss it and see, you know, see what they think about it, where they may stand on some proposals. But it'd be a good time to spend a little bit of time discussing that. And I would also suggest that we try to avoid actually doing official business whenever possible at these retreats. You know, the regular meeting, we get an agenda packet in advance. We have three or four or five days to read it over, to mull matters over, to do research, ask questions, and so forth. At these planning sessions, we come in, oftentimes, we're given a lot of material with a very short period of time to read it. We're sitting there all day, and I don't know about other people, but my mind kind of gets blank after a whole day. You can only absorb so much information after sitting for several hours. And then someone makes a motion to do something. We have a vote, and don't really have time to give matters due consideration. I don't really think that process is necessarily conducive to good decision-making. I think we ought to reserve our planning session for discussion. And maybe see if the board reaches a consensus on a matter, but if there's a really substantive matter to be voted on, unless it's something very urgent, it has to be passed then. I think it would be better to just put it on the agenda at a subsequent commissioners' meeting and dispose of it then rather than do it at the planning session. I really think we'd reach better decisions that way. I would agree with that. Can we take one liberty with that? We're going to come in here, we're going to talk a lot about economic development. And at some point, if we're not going to, I'm okay with not taking action, but at some point, strategies, recommendations are going to come forth. We're going to have to give those folks some general direction in that meeting as to how to proceed.
That's typically what we do.
Well, I think we can do that without taking action. Well, I just ask that we get as much information in advance as possible, you know, in a memo or agenda pack, so we'll have time to look it over and so forth prior to the meeting.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Andy Manager's report.
One quick thing, an update, and this is not because Jane is here, but one quick update on environmental health. I think I'd reported to you a while back that the backlogs had gotten pretty, pretty long. But they have filled some vacant positions with folks that could hit the ground running. They've kind of taken an all-hands-on-deck approach, and they've gotten that down to two weeks, which is very manageable and a very big step to getting caught up. So I'd just like to commend the Health Department and their staff for everything that they've done.
Is that two weeks in both Mooresville and Statesville offices?
I think it was, if I remember right, it was two weeks in Mooresville, one week in Statesville. I believe that's correct.
As a member of the Health Board, I would like to publicly welcome Ms. Murray as our new Health Director. I look forward as a member of that board to working with her in the future. She comes highly recommended, and I think she'll be able to establish some priorities and keep things moving over there. We're glad to have you aboard.
Okay. We have no closed session that I'm aware of, so the floor is open. Motion to adjourn. A motion to adjourn by Commissioner Griffith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.